In the event that our chair or vice chair are here, I need the four of you to vote on who will chair this meeting until one of them shows up or in the event that they don't. So we need to nominate a temporary chair and then vote on that.
Madam Clark, I nominate Mr. Wayne Acock.
I second you.
All right, and just by show of hands, all those in favor?
Raise your hand all the way.
All right, Mr. Acock, if you will.
Good morning. It's a little after eight o'clock time to start our pre-agenda meeting. Is it any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. I have a walk-on to put under consent. It's a motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, July 15th at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' Meeting Room in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex at 224 East Walnut Street to receive public comments on amendment to an existing economic development agreement between the City of Goldsboro and the County of Wayne regarding properties in the Park East Industrial Park. That would go under consent.
Okay.
I also have some budget amendments to walk on. The first one is 466 is a budget amendment for social services for travels, meals, and lodging. Let's see what it says here. Some additional funds are needed to complete the fiscal year because the child welfare, social workers, supervisors, and program managers must attend mandatory training for the new state child welfare software PATH NC. This program is deployed in July of '25, and the state just notified us the go-live date has been pending. Training is at various locations, and staff will go to training sites as they are assigned to attend. This training and travel is in addition to regular services. Staff travel and was not anticipated during the current year's budget planning. That's the one budget amendment we'll walk on. The second one is number 469 for finances. The purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate grant funds received by veteran services. Angie will go over it in further detail when we get to that point. I also have one for facilities to cover the purchase of a 2012 Mitsubishi box truck. That's budget amendment 470. And then I have one, 472, for social services. It's actual costs. This is for foster care, I believe. Yeah, for state county special assistance for adults line item. This is a mandated line item, and the amount is $10,000. That's budget amendment 472. She'll go over that further. Those are all the adjustments.
And we've got another resolution.
We have special presentations coming up, and we'll present our employee anniversary pins. Then number five, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-18 honoring the life of Efton Medford Sager.
Okay, that was one I was referring to. Thank you.
It's presented by Commissioner Joe Daughtry. Then we have number six, a motion to approve the 2025 Juneteenth National Freedom Day proclamation presented by Vice Chairman Bevan Foster. Then we have Appointment Committee, where we have a motion to reappoint Barbara Acock to the Wayne County Jury Commission.
And then we've got two additional recommendations to be voted on on July 15th.
And then we have a 9:30 a.m. public hearing to receive public comments regarding an economic incentive to Pelsan Tech Steel, which is also known as Project Istanbul, and the sale of approximately 31.83 acres containing two shell buildings valued at $7,726,200 located at 404-409 Gateway Drive. The board of commissioners will consider the sale of the property at a price of $5,186,400 in exchange for the company's commitment to invest a total of $32,600,000 in capital improvements and create 216 jobs in Wayne County. Board of Commissioners may take action following that public hearing. And then we move on to our consent agenda, Chairman, where I turn that over to Angie for the rest of the budget amendments.
Before she gets started, are we going to close session?
We will.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick, it's actually 404 and 408 Gateway Drive. That was a typo.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to start with budget amendment number 422. This budget amendment is to appropriate additional collections for our fire departments that is over the budgeted amounts. 429, this is for social services. This budget amendment is to provide time for staff to work on outstanding tasks or backlog without service interruption for the clients. This is through June the 14th. Number 430, this is for the Board of Commissioners. This is to reallocate funds to cover expenses for travel and building rental for the remainder of the fiscal year. Number 432. Purpose of this budget amendment is to anticipate and appropriate additional revenue that was received for wages food service. Number 434, this is a variety of departments. This budget amendment is to realign payroll line items through the end of the fiscal year. Number 435. This budget amendment is to appropriate fund balance for the CDM Smith contract for professional engineering services in connection with the Genoa system sewer rehab. This will be reimbursed once the loan has been closed, and we'll reimburse ourselves from the proceeds. Number 436, this budget amendment is to appropriate additional insurance reimbursement funds for the sheriff's office vehicle repairs. Number 437, this is to record receipt of revenue for controlled substance tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Number 443, this is also a variety of departments. This is due to the end of the year from LAPP salaries. The purchase of this budget amendment is to realign payroll line items through the end of the fiscal year. Number 444. This is to transfer funds to cover an anticipated shortfall in the central prison shared expense or safekeeping line item. 445 is social services. This is to cover postage needs for the remainder of the year. 446 is from the library. This is to accept a $1,000 donation from the Partnership for Children for program supplies, outreach, and to reallocate funds from the postage line item to telephone to cover anticipated expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. Number 447, this is from social services. This is a request to provide time for staff to continue to work on outstanding tasks or backlog without service interruption to our clients, and this goes through June the 28th. 448 is from the register of deeds. This is to recognize additional revenue expected through the end of the year. 451, this is to recognize revenue and expenses for the remainder of the year for the DSS trust account per Gatsby 84 requirements. Number 452 is for hospitalization. This is to reallocate funds to cover an unexpected increase in claims, and this should carry us through the end of the year. Number 453, during the development of the original budget, an error was made in the allocation of indirect cost associated with the Maxwell Center. The current figures do not align with the county's approved indirect cost plan. This amendment is necessary to bring the budget into compliance and ensure accurate cost recovery and financial reporting. Number 455, this is from the sheriff for SROs, to correctly record part-time school resource officer pay in the appropriate accounts.
So that's everything for this past year?
Yes, sir. Number 456 is from IT. This is a request to transfer funds from repairs and maintenance equipment to purchase a vehicle and accessories. Number 457, this is to recognize the revenue collected from the City of Goldsboro for their portion of the water and sewer change orders for the Wayne County business campus. 458 is to recognize revenue from the McKenzie class action opioid lawsuit. These funds cannot be commingled with the MOA funds from the North Carolina Department of Justice. And then the four walk-ons. Number 466, social services. Additional funds are needed to complete the fiscal year because child welfare, social workers, supervisors, and program managers must attend mandatory training for the new state child welfare software. 469, this is to anticipate and appropriate grant funds received by the veteran services. 470, this is requesting approval to use CIT funds to purchase a 2012 Mitsubishi box truck. And finally, number 472, social services. A request for additional funds for state and county special assistance for adults. This is a mandated program. It provides a supplement to eligible individuals which allows them to remain safely living in a private living arrangement.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Crump, do we need to go with Dave and see if he can find Barbara?
I've already texted. That's really, I asked you when I asked you when we got there. Number 10 is a motion to permit the Wayne County Cooperative Extension Office to apply for the farmers market promotion program fund being offered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. This is under consent, so now's your chance.
So we are asking for the grant to move forward with the grant to enhance the farmers market. What we'll be doing is adding a kitchen for Michelle to do her Tasty Fridays, Michelle Estrada to do her Tasty Fridays. What the plan is, is that she will do Tasty Fridays, do a recipe at this kitchen, and then we will have boxes for people to purchase that have come from the farmers market. All the ingredients will have come from the farmers market. It will be like a meal prep kit. It's a great way to get all of the vendors involved in one project. It's a great way to demonstrate what we have going on with the extension with the kitchen and with Tasty Fridays. It's a good way for nutrition. It's just a great all-around grant opportunity to...
So you're going to utilize the kitchen that's in the main building, or you're talking about putting a new kitchen?
No, we're talking about putting a new kitchen, and what we're talking about either, one of two things, either having a portable, something that Michelle can use other than just an eight-foot table, something with a sink, or we've also talked about possibly the storage building, storage room at the end of the farmers market. Pushing that wall back just a little bit. So we would not be taking any space from the farmers market. It would just be, we would either utilize what we've got with a portable kitchen, or we would push that wall back some and use, create new space for the kitchen.
How much is the grant?
Up to $250,000. Over three years.
So, I mean...
It's $250,000 over three years, like it would be spread out over three years.
I mean, is that something that we could, there's some options that we could work on that. Okay.
Yeah, she's asking for the opportunity to apply for that grant.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Godspeed.
It'll all be in kind. With our time and the use of the farmers market.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11 is a motion to approve the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC, funding plan for 2025. I don't see anybody here for that. Number 12, anything you want to say on it?
Pardon me?
Is there anything you'd like to add to, say about it?
No, their funding comes from the state, but it just has to be formally approved by the board. Mr. Pittman was going to come and present it, but was unable to at last meeting, so he asked that we just put it under the consent agenda for your approval.
Number 12 is a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-19, adopting the 50 First Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County, North Carolina. There is your HR director.
Morning.
Morning.
All the changes that are on the pay plan is just anticipating the update for the budget, and that's just necessary updates to keep everything in line. Any questions?
Is that the, you have a markup in the documents there, and then you have the plan. So is the pay plan, July 2025, the actual final version, not the markup?
Yes.
Got you. I was just trying to understand the difference between the two.
Any questions?
No, but I do have a comment. Going forward, if you would give us a markup so we could see what changes that you are proposing as such. Do I know? proposing as such, do I know?
The markup.
That is, that is in our package. Okay, good enough, thank you.
Would you like to put it on?
No, we're good. We're good.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to 13 is a motion to cancel the July 1st, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Any discussions on that?
None, we agree.
Okay, Tim wants to ask the question.
I wanted to discuss that.
And then moving on to new business, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025, adopting the News River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. A copy of the plan can be reviewed online at newsriverhmp.com. Barry will be here in the meeting to talk about that.
He's here, ma'am.
We normally talk about those items during the regular meeting unless you want to talk to them now.
He just got up. Actually, he made his sister move out of the way so he could get up.
Number 15 is a discussion of Mount Olive Steel Memorial Library electrical fees as requested by Commissioner Antonio Williams. Then we have County Managers Report, Board of Commissioners Committee Reports, closed session, and we do have closed session, and then adjournment after that.
Do we have time for closed session now?
Yes, sir.
Do we?
Yeah.
Is it proper for us to go ahead and do the closed session with who the board members missing?
That would be fine.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go in closed session.
And the purpose will be to consult with your attorney employed by the board to maintain attorney-client privilege and discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries within the county.
You're a man, buddy. Glad you said the same. Okay.
Not everybody is.
Need to do a countdown?
Commissioner Williams, did you vote?
Mine didn't pop up the vote.
It says you voted.
You still have someone there.
That's fine.
Okay, I wrote that down there.
Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to assemble here in this Commissioner room, God, to carry out the business of Wayne County, Lord, and support the citizens of Wayne County. Father, we pray that you please bless us with your wisdom, God, as we make these decisions to support our citizens, God, and our families and friends, and ask for your guidance, Father. We also ask for blessings and healing upon those, Father Day, that might be suffering in any way in our county and across our nation and world, God, and it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would also please join me in saying for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of the minutes for the May 27, 2025 minutes and the June 3, 2025 minutes.
So moved.
Individually?
Yeah.
So moved on the 3rd.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have a couple of adjustments. I have one walk on that goes under consent. It's a motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, July 15.
We'll recess until nine o'clock.
I'd like to call the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, June 17th meeting to order. We'll have invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Tim Harrow.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. If you would please bow your heads and pray with me. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to assemble here in this Commissioner's room, God, to carry out the business of Wayne County, Lord, and support the citizens of Wayne County. Father, we pray that you please bless us with your wisdom, God, as we make these decisions to support our citizens, God, and our families and friends, and ask for your guidance, Father. We also ask for blessings and healing upon those, Father, today, that might be suffering in any way in our county and across our nation and world, God, and it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would also please join me in saying for our pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you need a, we need approval of the minutes for the May 27, 2025 minutes and the June 3, 2025 minutes.
So moved. Individually?
Yeah.
So moved on the 3rd.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have a couple of adjustments. I have one walk on that goes under consent. It's a motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, July 15 at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioner's meeting room, Wayne County Courthouse, Annex 224 East Walden Street, to receive public comments on an amendment to an existing economic development agreement between the City of Goldsboro and the County of Wayne regarding properties in the Park East Industrial Park. That goes under consent. Also have a couple of budget amendments that we discussed at our briefing. Those are Budget Amendments 466, 469, 470, and 472. They all go under consent, and the Budget Amendments have one small change under our 9:30 public hearing. Instead of 404 and 409 Gateway Drive, it is 404 and 408 Gateway Drive, and that's the only changes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I question, we approve the adjusted agenda?
We move along to special presentations, and at this time, we'll have our presentation of employee anniversary pins.
All right, when I call your name, if you will, please stand in front of the Commissioner's desk so we can take a photograph afterwards, and I will begin with the first year pins as soon as they're ready. All righty, beginning with one-year anniversary pins, Jody Smill with Solid Waste, Brandon Bachelor with the Detention Center, Lindsay Headley, Detention Center, James Donovan, EMS, Abriel Walker, EMS, Anthony Royster, Detention Center, Matthew Agueroz, Maxwell Center, Close No, David Stroud, Inspections, Janice Adalot, Solid Waste, ate a lot, Don Trail Boykin, Detention Center, Christopher Zuccini, IT, Carson Rogers with the Sheriff's Office, David Prince with EMS, and Tamika Kroom, Detention Center. And those are our one-year. All right, now moving on to our five-year pin recipients. We'll begin with Sharice Taylor Presley, Public Health Maternity Care Project, Mr. James Parker with Facility Services, Brittany Darby, Public Health Family Planning, and Jennifer Pineda Ruiz, EMS. All right, those are our five-year recipients. All right, next, we have our 10-year recipients. All right, beginning with Alfred Moheaser with the Sheriff's Office, then Amber Jackson with 911, Hope Shiver with the Sheriff's Office, Heather Drake with EMS, and we all know he's out there working, Mr. Dave Cudabag with EMS. We'll make certain that he gets his, and those are our 10-year recipients. All right, beginning with our 15-year, we have Mr. Gary Tillman with OES, and Angie Boswell, our Finance Director. All right, our 20-year is not here, but I do want to mention his name, Jason Gray with EMS. He is one fine young man. I've known him since he was very young, so I just had to say his name at least. Now, we'll move on to our 25-year anniversary pin recipients. The first being Tammy Mathis, DSS Regular Services Administration. And Kayla, if you will hand that to Mr. Chip Crumpler, our County Manager, on his 24. And those are all the recipients for this, but I need y'all to act like you like each other or something. Some of the little people in front and the bigger people in the back, so we can get a picture from Communications. Yes, because you're little people. All right, so everybody, we have the Commissioner standing behind you. Look out there at that camera, and we should get an okay in just a second that they've got your picture. They got it. Thank you all. Good job.
Okay. a resolution honoring the life of Efton Medford Sager, as presented by Commissioner Joe Daughery. David, if you and your family could come join me? And if you would, come around here so we can face the camera there.
Okay, great. Today, we wanted to honor the life of Efton Medford Sager. This resolution is 2025-18, a resolution honoring the life of Efton Medford Sager. Whereas Winston Churchill once said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners honors the life of Efton M. Sager, who spent all of his adult life giving to his country and his community. And whereas Efton M. Sager was born in Missouri on June 10, 1933, and graduated from Pierce City High School in 1950. And whereas Efton M. Sager served in the United States Air Force for 21 years, retiring as a Master Sergeant. And whereas Efton M. Sager was fully involved in his community through the American Legion Post 10, the Goldsboro Masonic Lodge 634, Gideon's International, Disabled American Veterans, Wayne County Red Cross, Eastern Carolina Council of Governments, and his favorite church, Brogdon Church. And whereas Efton M. Sager served as Wayne County Commissioner from 2000 to 2008, and then as a member of the North Carolina House of Representatives from 2009 to 2013. And whereas Efton M. Sager is survived by his son David and wife Catherine, daughter Deborah and husband David, grandchildren Jacob and wife Megan, Leanne and husband Josh, and great-grandchildren Jackson and Charles. Therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and recognize the late Mr. Efton M. Sager for his decades of unselfish service to the citizens of Wayne County and the United States of America, and for answering the call to service for his dedication. Adopted this the 17th day of June 2025.
Thank you so much for being here today. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Daughery.
Commissioner Daughery, is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion. Thank you, sir. I vote yes. All righty, thank you for that vote. Remember him well when he served here. If you hadn't heard, I've been around here 25 years.
And if he was here, you'd have asked Tim to speak, he'd spoke.
He would have. A great man and a great servant to our community. Absolutely. Moving along to number six, is a motion to approve the 2025 Juneteenth National Freedom Day proclamation, as presented by Vice Chairman Bevan Foster.
2025 Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day, the day freedom was proclaimed to all slaves by Union General Gordon Grandeur on June 19, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, more than two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas former slaves in Texas began to observe June 19 as the anniversary of their emancipation, and coined their term "Juneteenth." And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States, and is also known as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, Emancipation Day, and African-American Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the survival, strength, and determination of African-Americans through extreme adversity, hardship, and triumph, and today emphasizes African-Americans' education, culture, art, history, and achievement. And whereas the 19th of June, along with the 4th of July, completes the cycle of freedom and independence observed in America. And whereas the state of the state, the state, whereas every state, the District of Columbia and Wayne County, recognize the 19th day of June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States and to demonstrate racial reconciliation and healing from the legacy of slavery. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Wayne County, commend its observance to all citizens. Adopted this the 17th day of June 2025.
Then that's in the motion. So moved.
The motion is still here.
It would need to be Commissioner Williams.
Oh. Yeah, I did.
You're in charge of this.
Oh, thanks, Ron. Okay. Forgot about that.
All right. Thank you for that vote. Moving along to our Appointment Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we make a motion to reappoint Barbara Acop to the Wayne County Jury Commission.
That's in the form of a motion. And also today, we're recommending the reappointment of Dr. Rick Sessions, Parker Sherard, Keith Spivey, and Freeman Hardison Jr. to the Wayne County Health and Human Services Advisory Board. We will be voting on that on July 15. Also, we are wanting to reappoint Shirley Edwards to the Eastern Carolina Regional Housing Authority, and again, that will be voted on on July 15. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All righty. Everybody on the, okay. Moving along, we'll look for approval of our consent agenda at this point in time.
Please move.
Moving down to new business, since it's 9:20, we'll have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-21, a resolution adopting the Moose River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. A copy of the plan can be reviewed online at www moosriverhmp.com, and we'll ask our planning director, Barry Gray, to go over with you.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
This is our update for our hazard mitigation plan. It's a regional hazard mitigation plan. We currently have a plan in place that's required by the state that we adopted or reapprove it or revise it every five years, so that's where we are today. The plan has been vetted. We have a list of mitigation strategies in front of you. The plan itself is quite a lengthy document, but because it is a regional plan, there's information in there on our other counties that are participating, like Pitt County, Nor Jones, Green County. But what's important to us is the mitigation strategies in front of us. They really haven't changed over the five years. They've been tweaked a little bit, but most information is still the same. Some of those include, and I'll mention those really quick, is, you know, continuing to enforcement of our flood ordinance, our flood program, with our free board requirements requiring elevation, you know, in those flood zones, maintaining our CRS program, which is through FEMA, which, you know, with us participating in that, our people that have flood insurance in this county can actually benefit from a reduction in their rate, a percentage decrease, with our participation in that. You know, continuing to annually update our emergency operations plan, which is done through our OES office, education programs to inform people on hazard, hazards in this county, code red emergency system, continue maintaining that. So all that's kind of covered in here. What the importance of this plan is really, if we ever apply for grants, or when we do apply for grants in the future that are related to hazard mitigation, we have to have this plan in place, otherwise we will not qualify for future grants. So that's really one of the importance of this document, is that we do have one and have it active and have it revised every five years to meet the state standards.
I got a question. Does on the, since we participate in this, on flood insurance, do the insurance companies automatically give those a reduction in their premium, or is they, do they have to ask for it?
It's automatic. With the CRS program that we participate in, it's automatic.
Is it?
Right now, they get a, I think it's 15. It's a 15% decrease in flood insurance.
So the insurance companies already give it to them, so they don't have, okay. Thank you, sir.
Barry, can you just help me understand the free boarding requirement in Wayne County?
Yeah, if you're in a flood hazard zone or the 100-year flood plain, there's an elevation that FEMA has identified that that flood level would be 100-year flood above the ground. And then so that free board basically is, you have to build to that level, but our ordinance actually says that we want you to build two feet higher than that, because as we know, that 100-year flood plain keeps going up a little bit every time, you know, it rains. So you actually have to be two feet above that flood level. So if your home, the elevation of your home is 100 feet above sea level, flood zone is 102 feet, so it's two feet above the ground, the flood level is, you have to build four feet above the ground. And that includes your lowest floor, it includes your electrical equipment, your air-conditioned vents, all that stuff now has to be elevated two feet above to kind of provide that barrier there for any increase.
Kind of like getting a beach, you got AE8 or whatever, it's that far above the elevation flood zone.
Do most counties require the two foot?
They do. Some of them, there's a few that require one, but most of them have gone to two. And the higher, the more you increase that, the better, I guess, we score with our CRS program, which allows for that reduction.
All it takes is one drainage structure to be stocked up and it erupts in a hurry. Does that requirement also include the ductwork that's under this?
It does.
It does?
It does.
Because that generally hangs down another, could be 18 inches.
That's right. Yeah, it does include the ductwork. Yeah, it does include the duct work. It used to not include that years ago, but it does include it now because of the issues with the La Pas storm, where so many people had issues with their eking and all, and their duct works, where the water rose. So now all that has to be elevated to. Some people are doing them now in the ceiling, you know, to the top, that type of thing, but it would have to be.
That's where many splits come.
Participation in this program allows any homeowner in Wayne County to purchase flood insurance, not just, not just homes that are located in a special flood hazard area, but you just made a comment that rung a bell. You can't have flooding instances that are not mapped flood hazards that subject properties to flooding that the FEMA has not identified in their mapping. So those homes are eligible for flood insurance as well at a reduced premium because we participate in having these requirements above and beyond. What the standard is, yeah.
Give them back to our citizens.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mary.
Make a motion that we approve or adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Alrighty, thank you for that. Moving along to item number fifteen is a discussion of the Mount Olive Steel Memorial Library electrical fees as requested by Commissioner Antonio Williams.
Thank you. First off, I want to welcome Mount Olive Mayor Newton and Commissioner Simmons. Good to see you here today. And in regard to the Mount Olive Steel Public Library, I think it's very important that, you know, we definitely have discussion and hopefully the board can come to some resolution. The county already pays, pays the utility fees for Goldsboro Public Library, and both libraries are branches of the Wayne County Public Library System. The Steel Library serves not only Mount Olive, but also serves surrounding areas. Smaller towns like Mount Olive may struggle to cover their utility costs for, you know, for public resources. So covering utilities would help maintain constant hours. This protects the level of service residents have come to rely on in Mount Olive. We've set a precedent with Goldsboro Library, this is simply an extension of that practice. It promotes consistent and transparent funding across the county. So to ensure fairness, the same support should be extended to the Mount Olive Steel Library. They serve residents across the county, not just those in the city limits. It provides essential access to internet, banks, I mean, internet books, job searches, and educational programs. County support would help keep the library fully operational and accessible. This board supporting this action shows the county's commitment to supporting all communities fairly. It builds stronger collaboration between the county and the municipalities as well. Thank you. If there's any questions, I welcome.
So what are the, have we got the, what the actual invoices are for the?
The last four invoices range from twenty-five hundred dollars a month to four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Well, was it the county agreed to pay up to fifteen hundred?
Yes, sir. I uploaded the old agreement that was referenced, I think, at the last meeting.
I think I was chair when that was, when that was done.
Yes, sir. It was fifteen hundred. It's, that's the amount that the town had originally agreed to pay.
How much does Fremont pay?
All of it.
Fremont pays everything.
They provide utilities at no cost because they run their electricity.
So that's, that's, it's a little different with Fremont because one, they, it's through them. And two, I mean, my thing is, you know, we have, it's called Wayne County Library. I feel like Wayne County should be taking care of that. We are doing it here in the city, we should also be doing it in Mount Olive as well. I understand that this was signed ten years ago, and, you know, things are subject to change. I just don't see in all fairness how we can continue to charge them for something that provides service to all the citizens in Wayne County. The same way with, like I said, the library here in Goldsboro. We don't charge the city for a light bill or anything, so why should we be charging them?
I have a question. So we have a memorandum with the town to operate the Steel Library. Do we have a memorandum with the city to operate the Goldsboro City Library?
Well, it's not a city library anymore, it's completely controlled.
It's completely controlled by us now. Who owns the building in Wayne, in Mount Olive?
We do.
We own that building. Who staffs it?
Wayne County Public Library staffs it.
We do.
Paid for by us.
There was a movement when that library was constructed, I think the town of Mount Olive had a group of interested citizens that raised about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, towards the construction of the library, and this was the agreement that the town entered into and to attract it.
It was actually the old deals.
Yeah.
So it was renovations that.
I remember that. Correct.
And what year was that?
This was entered into in twenty fifteen. I'm not sure. It would have been about that time.
Yeah.
Well, additionally.
Well, they're saying, it's saying from, it was one thousand to fifteen hundred, July first, twenty fifteen. So it was a thousand before that, so it had to be.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the year that that was done. It was since, it's been in the last, it's been in the two thousands.
It says a date that July the one of twenty fifteen.
Been since twenty ten, I think.
But the rate went up in twenty fifteen.
Yes. It also says the town further agrees that the fifteen hundred dollars shall be increased by any percentage rate increase that the electricity company providing services shall become authorized to charge its customers in the rate category assigned to the Steel Memorial Library.
May I ask an additional question, please, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
The city library, which is now operated by the county, when did the county of Wayne take over the city library?
Early two thousand, two thousand and six. Twenty ten.
I was about to say, I think it was twenty ten when it went from the foundation over to the county.
With that, I know we don't exactly know the dates yet, but would that have been after the original agreement with Mount Olive was done, the original one? Because it looks like this fifteen might have been an adjustment.
They had, says go down to the old number three.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, there was an original smaller library in Mount Olive.
Right.
And the town of Mount Olive, in order to support that, paid one thousand dollars in the electric bill of that library. They, they then entered into a discussion in regards to expanding and building the Steel Memorial Library. And at that time, in order to make that possible, the town of Mount Olive agreed that they would pay the additional five hundred dollars. So it went from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars on July first of fifteen. Additionally, this agreement also has in it an escalation clause based upon additional cost of that. However, we have not increased those fees, we have kept it at fifteen hundred dollars. So as we were expanding branch libraries, as we did in Fremont, those particular municipalities participated in the cost of operation. So at any rate, it was before my time whenever the county actually assumed full responsibility of the Goldsboro Library. The Goldsboro Library was assumed all responsibility of library services at that time and took over the Goldsboro Library.
That was just, thank you. I was just, my thought was with Goldsboro, I'm not trying to get off topic, but was that something that the city wanted to give that back to the county?
City did not operate.
City did not operate, I'm sorry.
Private foundation operated.
It was the Wayne County Library Foundation.
Got you.
Who's still in existence now and donates to all county operations, but they turned it over to the county.
Because they could not assume continued operating cost of it?
Can't speak on it, but I would swing, so. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I would drive. I'm sorry.
Angie, do you know, you know what the last year, what the, what the utilities costs for the last year are, not just the last couple of months?
The average over the past twelve months just for electrical was thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one hundred?
Yes, sir. And the last bill we paid was twenty-five hundred.
So that's thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars just for electrical. And I guess the, if I'm looking at it right, the town of Mount Olive is paying eighteen thousand of it. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fifteen hundred a month.
So we're still twenty-one or nineteen, okay. Plus the water and maintenance. Do we have somebody down there cleaning, or does the staff do that?
Facilities.
Facilities, okay. So it's costing us a lot more than, okay.
The town does water and sewer though, for the Steel Memorial.
It's in the agreement.
We just pay electric.
I have a question. Will the, how much are we paying to lease the building in Mount Olive? I mean, in Fremont.
Two thousand dollars a month.
Thousand a month. Does Mount Olive cover water and, I mean, lights and sewer down there?
Covers everything.
Yeah. You can cover all utilities down there?
You mean in Fremont?
Yes, I mean in Fremont, sorry.
Yeah, they do. They do. And then we also, since we're actually leasing the building, we split the costs, we both eat our own property tax costs, which, you know, is fair given that.
We cover maintenance, cleaning, everything else.
How many square feet is a Steel Memorial? You may not?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. We also rehad the building too, at a considerable cost.
There was a lot of issues with that building that they did not realize until we got into it.
Mr. Chairman?
So we stand, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yes or no? You first.
Okay. I make a motion that we maintain the current agreements that we have in place regarding the Steel Memorial Library.
I wasn't finished my discussion.
Well, I've got a motion.
He does have a motion, but you can still discuss what you have to discuss.
Yeah.
Sure.
What I was saying is, when Chris was speaking, you know, I was waiting basically to state that Wayne County, we are required to provide services, and that is part of our services. You know, of course, there was a contract that was done several years ago, but we are we are to provide services. And again, that wouldn't be fair that Goldsboro doesn't, they don't have to pay. Why don't we make the city of Goldsboro then pay that bill? You know, that municipality. You know, we should, we need to think about this thing. And what I'd like to ask as well, we have two individuals that are on the board in Mount Olive. I don't know if they want to add to this situation in regard to educating us a little bit more on why they need our help pertaining to that. So Mr. Mayor, do you have anything that you'd like to say? Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
It's fine, Bobby. Yes. Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning.
As I went through this contract, first of all, because it has no end date, it kind of got my attention. But as you look at it, it speaks to the electricity. And I'm hearing now that the electric bill is thirty-one hundred dollars a month. But the thing I look at too is that for all this past ten years per se, just electric bill that we are paying the fifty hundred dollars a month, is equated approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't take, I don't.
Is that in the annual?
When you look at the ten years of the fifty hundred dollars per month for electric bill, it equates to about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Got you.
Okay? And so having said that, I make no excuses for the situation that Mount Olive's in, prior to my time. However, as we reviewed some of these contracts, some of the things that have taken place prior to, it appears that however it was done, many times it was not in the best interest of the town. And therefore, we're trying to resolve some of those things. I understand that the contract was signed by the mayor two or three times prior to my time. But as Commissioner Williams is saying, if the other municipalities, if Goldsboro is also a county library, is not, does not have to pay these fees, I would ask that we be given the same likeness as such. The challenge we face, as you know, I don't like talking about the moratorium, we're trying to get out of some things to get ourselves back in a place that we can do things that needs to be done. It's going to take some time. This, but the hundred and eighty thousand dollars does not include the water and sewer. I understand we still, we take care of that as well. So that's another cost we take care of. So if it's possible, and looking at the amendment, at the agreement mutually, if we can agree, we can amend it. If you don't take it all away, give us some relief, so that we can try to move forward. But at the same time, if you're not charging, if, if, if the other municipalities are not paying, then I think as a county library, it does not, it's not Mount Olive's library. And it was reconstruction, it was not building a building because it says that when the county built this building, it did not build this building, it was, it was the old belts, so there was some renovations done to make it what it is. As is this building or this library, which is still a library, the same name as the old name, provides service not just to Mount Olive, Duquesne, well, Duquesne County surrounding areas, this is where they come. So therefore, I think that, I would ask that the, that the board would consider the fact that even though it sits in our town, it's serviced well beyond our capacity. And therefore, we're asking that you reconsider and that you consider relieving us of this challenge.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just, I've made a few texts just to make sure that I understood this, there's twenty-two thousand square feet in that building, and the mayor is correct, we did not build the building, but we did spend two million dollars to renovate it. So, yeah, so that's two million dollar upgrade. We could probably build one.
That's a lot for an upgrade for a building that, that I thought was as nice as belts.
Well, but that's, that's coming straight from the facilities, so.
We found some major issues that we did not, did not realize that the building had. It had major roof leak issues. The AC units all had to be replaced. It was, it was not just going in and refinishing the inside, there was a lot of, a lot of other monies put in different places to, that had to be put there to maintain the building.
And to bring to Mr. Vice Chairman's point a while ago, we've got a ten-year, I think, ten-year contract on the lease in Fremont, and it's all said and done, I don't think we'll have, including the lease and what upgrades, we'll have less than three hundred and forty thousand dollars in the whole process, two hundred and forty on the lease and about a hundred thousand in upgrades.
So I would ask then, this is a non, a non-ending contract, there's no end date to it. However, it does say if the, if the, if the parties agree, it can be amended. Now, of course, not asking for an amendment, but it can be if the parties agree. But with a non-ending contract, we are stuck with paying this until the duration of time, obviously. And so that's why I'm asking that you would consider this.
Or unless the, unless the library ceases to exist in Mount Olive, that would be the only other way out, I guess.
According to this contract, that's the only way out. According to this contract, that's the only way out.
Yep.
Um, I have something to say. Um, we're thirty-one hundred on a lease that, on a building that we will, we will never own. We own the building in Mount Olive already. That thirty-one hundred is thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars a year.
Do what now?
I said the lease is thirty.
The lease is two thousand.
Two thou, two thousand, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars a, a year.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, two thousand times twelve is twenty-four.
I thought she said twenty-four hundred. Is it two thousand or twenty-four hundred?
It's two thousand dollars a month.
I can double check real quick.
I thought it was twenty-four hundred a month.
I, I thought he said twenty-four hundred. I could be wrong.
I thought it was two thousand dollars a month.
I don't remember.
Either way, I mean, it's.
Um, it is twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Two thousand dollars a month.
Two thousand dollars a month, okay. So that changed my numbers a little bit to...
And we pay that one time a year, for, just for your information.
Does anyone know what the traffic flow is at the library in Mount Olive?
Not off the top of my head, I do not. We could find that out from the library staff. Get it back to you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
So if I have a concern, and I address this to my colleagues too, as we sit in these seats, we're all short-term caregivers, trying to look after the best interest of our citizens. And if I have a concern about this particular MOU agreement contract, is it sounds like that when this was done, there was truly a good intention to try to provide services for our citizens. And good faith effort on both sides, trying, trying to find a way to, to provide library access, educational opportunities, all these things for our citizens. Mount Olive had an opportunity to kind of have that cliche skin in the game. The county did as well. Uh, I remember the old library, because, you know, part of District Four goes into, to Mount Olive. And, um, I remember Craft Studios and all those things right, right where it was, and then expanding it across into the belt facility. My grandmother worked in, my great-grandmother worked in belts a few years ago. So the library got larger. And the, the parties involved agreed to these terms. Because everyone had an opportunity to, um, take ownership in it. And if I have a concern now, and, and I do not say this arrogantly, so please forgive me, is Mount Olive wants to come back and look at this and put it back on the county, right? So taxpayers are still going to pay. And now the county is being asked to pick up this obligation, that there was an agreement, and the county's put two million into a building, all these different things, right? So I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at anything. I just think it's something to think about, that when we enter into agreements and do obligations, right, that we may enter into, and then twenty, ten years from now, we end up looking at these again. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have an opportunity to look at it. But as we step in, it ends up being pushed back to the county to be able to fund it. I equate it sometimes in my school world as to your booster clubs, right? Your booster clubs come out and they want to do wonderful things to help your campuses. They're adding signs, lighting, all this stuff. But in the end, when it gets added, and they're gone, it ends up being the district or the county that has to maintain what's been added. I would have two questions. I like the data question that Mr., um, Commissioner Acock asked. You know, as I look at our libraries, and I am for public education, everybody knows that in libraries, but there's a, there's a cost to everything. How, how much are these facilities actually being utilized? And is twenty-two thousand square feet that we had a vision for in twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, is twenty-two thousand square feet actually too large, and our expenses are going up? And do we need to continue to have a library there? But does it need to be downsized? Does it need to be more digital as, um, Commissioner Williams has talked about more resources and things now? And does that downsize things? So, um, just have a cons- concern now that I sit in this role. I do agree there needs to be fairness. I'm getting that with how we look at these opportunities. But I do have a concern that things end up being kind of pushed back to the county potentially to ask to pick it back up or fund it. If that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, if I could also pick up on this. You know, we're talking about a decade, basically, ten years ago. The town of Mount Olive came to us and wanted us to expand that library. But in the expansion, they also wanted meeting rooms. They also wanted some other, uh, facilities for the town of Mount Olive. So it wasn't just a matter of a library. It was a, um, combination community center to where, uh, uh, civic clubs could meet. Uh, so if, if you'll notice, even though it's twenty-two thousand square feet, uh, there are more than a library at this library. It's more than a library. There are benefits for the community. Additionally, they wanted expansion of the library to actually bring people to Mount Olive as an advantage, so that they would come there, shop, and spend monies there in Mount Olive. So it was, so to speak, almost an economic development. So it was a, it, it was multifaceted. Uh, in doing that, we came to an agreement with the town of Mount Olive that they would increase their contribution from a thousand by five hundred dollars. They were already paying the water and the sewer at the old library. They continued to pay the water and sewer, which was town services, that they would provide for the new library. So it was a benefit for the town, for the, the county. It was a benefit all the way around. So it's, it wasn't just a matter of reaching out to the town of Mount Olive and say, we'll build a library if you'll give us fifteen hundred dollars a month or pay that toward the, the, uh, electric bill. It was a combination effort to find a way to actually expand the library services and the meeting facilities there in Mount Olive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Um, I'd like to say something, something pretty simple, to the point. As we all sit here, we're all county commissioners. And I feel like there are times that, as being county commissioners, we don't always do things that are about the county. A lot of times we get in a tug-of-war over things and everything else. This library benefits the county. Regardless of what we want to say about Mount Olive, it benefits the county. If Mount Olive draws in people from Duplin County or anywhere else to come to that library, that still helps this county. Because Mount Olive is a part of this county. I think a lot of times we get away from that and we start being on some tug-of-war or, I don't even have the right word for it sometimes. And we forget that we're supposed to be serving the best interest of the county. There are taxpayers in Mount Olive that pay city tax and county tax. And they're totally funding this light bill. What part of the, you know, I, I just don't feel like that's fair amongst, because someone from Seven Springs or Dudley or other areas over there on that other side.
Marmack.
Marmack. Would come to Mount Olive instead of coming to Goldsboro maybe because it's less traffic or the headache and visit that library. How is it fair that Mount Olive has to cover all of that, that bill, that utility bill? We'll cover a part of that utility bill. I don't think that's fair. With, you know, being that we, we're here in the city and we have the same thing. People from all around the county come to Goldsboro to come to the library. It benefits people coming from wherever they come from. Somebody comes from Mount Olive, uh, Mount Olive would say, oh, well, I don't want to go to my library there because they have something in Goldsboro. They may, while they're here, pick up something from Goldsboro, which benefits the city. You know, so I don't think that, that's, that should be an issue. Uh, we're, we're talking about a total of, uh, what, eighteen thousand dollars a year. And that may help Mount Olive in some things that they need to do. We're here to help and make the county better. By making the county better, it also is to help the city of Goldsboro to do things. Fremont and Mount Olive. That's what we're here for. And I think that we, we get so far away from that mission sometimes that, that, that it's kind of sort of a shame because, you know, I live in the city and I pay county and city taxes. So in all fairness, let's, let's look at that across the board and have some fairness with saying, okay, let's do the right thing. Let's help those right now that we need our help. And we need to sit down with the town of Mount Olive and, and see what we can do to help them if they're struggling. What can we do? I, I don't know. But it would be something as a board, I feel like that we're supposed to be doing. Because if the town of Mount Olive is doing better, how much better does that, does that make Wayne County?
Chair, and, um, I just want to add, um, part of our, our description of what county commissioners do, we fund local libraries. It doesn't say we partially fund. We fund. This, we allocate money to cover their costs. So I don't understand why we're just fighting back and forth pertaining to helping something that we're already, we're supposed to be, be paying. We're supposed to be allocating funding for these libraries. And I don't see why we cannot do this for this particular library. We approve renovations, expansions, construction, all of those things for those facilities. We, we provide services for the schools. We provide services for our health department. We don't ask the health department to pay their electrical bill. These are all services that we are entitled to take care of. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion.
I would like to clarify one point.
Yes, sir.
Libraries are a choice to be funded by the county commissioners. They are not a mandated service. Health departments and school funding are mandated services. I'm not saying any, I just want to clarify that point for pointed discussion.
Call the question.
Mr. Chairman, are you ending debate and calling the?
Yes.
Or vote, okay. I just making sure.
Thank you.
And unless the, does everybody know where the motion is, or if you want to repeat it?
Let me repeat the motion. I move that we continue with the current agreements that we have in regards to funding the Steel Memorial Library. Is this a hand vote or a?
It was three to three, so I don't know if it passes or fails.
It fails.
Yeah.
It fails.
Any other motion?
Yeah. Nobody else made a motion.
I hit the wrong button.
Well, that's kind of sort of, you gotta.
It don't matter, it fails either way.
It fails.
Yeah, it did fail.
All righty. Any other discussions on that?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that this matter be referred to the facilities committee to look at this MOU and all other library MOUs that we have, and actually give it some discussion and thought, and come back to us with a recommendation. Instead of us just taking a vote and discussing it here.
I personally have no problem with that. How does the rest of the board feel?
We've waited this long, so I don't have a problem with this. You know, hopefully we will hear something back within the next month or so.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
So that would be to refer all three library branches?
To the facilities committee. Okay.
And also, I'd like to request some information on that. Can we, um, send it to all the board members how much we are paying for utilities in the city of Goldsboro? Yeah.
May I add to that too, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Please, can we also, if it's possible, get usage data on our, if there's any way to track data of, how they're being utilized?
Right.
Please.
Yes, sir. And, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I just wanted to state to, um, our visitors, uh, to, uh, Mount Olive Mayor and the Commissioner Simmons that, you know, we are concerned here about what goes on in Mount Olive. And sorry, we couldn't come to something that would be in your favor today. But hopefully the board will, you know, go through things, um, and it won't have, won't be so rushed and consider something that's going to be in the best interest of all of our libraries.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on that topic? If not, we'll move to, back to our public hearing, nine-thirty AM public hearing. It's now ten o'clock. Anyway, to receive public comments regarding an economic incentive agreement to Pelsan Tech Steel, also known as Project Istanbul, and the sale of approximately thirty-one point eight-three acres containing two shell buildings valued at seven million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars located at four oh four and four oh eight Gateway Drive, Goldsboro NC. The Board of Commissioners will consider the sale of the property at a price of five million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars in exchange for the company's commitment to invest a total of eighty-two million, six hundred thousand and capital improvements and create two hundred and sixteen jobs in Wayne County. The Board of Commissioners may take action following the public hearing. I'll turn that over to Andrew.
So, um, Mark's here as well.
Before that, he needs to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Open the nine-thirty. Well, public hearing, even though it's ten o'clock.
So Mark's here as well can talk a little bit about the, um, company itself. I was just going to go over the project summary and then the, um, ED agreement this before you. So the location is four oh four and four oh eight Gateway Drive. Those are two new shell buildings that we, um, built in conjunction with WCDAs. So thirty thousand square foot and the fifty thousand square foot. Um, one of them is on four and a half acres, the other one's on six and a half acres. Um, and then in addition to that, the negotiations with the company was to convey another three point five acres along with those shell buildings at no cost. Um, so that's one part of the incentive. And then there's an additional seventeen point three-three acres, which is a section down here on the southern part, um, that's undeveloped, um, that they would also like to purchase as well. Um, it would not include, um, the Ivy Drive right away, right here, as well as this little triangle on the other side. That would maintain, still, um, stay in county, um, ownership. That's an overview of what the project is. So that we're doing this a little bit different than we, than we have done. Um, it was negotiated differently with this company. Generally, what we do is, um, each year of the agreement, ten years, the company pays for the taxes on the improvements. Each year, we calculate the number of jobs, if they meet their thresholds, and if they meet their capital improvements. And then we issue an economic incentive grant annually back to the company af- after their taxes are paid. Um, what we're doing on this one, what has been negotiated, is that all incentives are being taken on the, on the front part, out of the sale of the property. So we are reducing the price, the sale price of the company upfront. Um, now, the way that that works is each year annually, we still do our calculation. Have they met their job threshold? Have they met their capital improvement? And then we keep a running ledger. And at the end of the ten years, if they have not, um, fulfilled all the agreements and they would be entitled, they would have to repay some of the incentives that they've paid on the front end. So that's how it's been structured right now.
And they start paying property taxes.
But they pay property taxes immediately. So we anticipate closing on this within the next, and that's part of the reason why we structured it this way. So, um, so many times, we're just selling land that has no improvements on it, so we're not getting taxes right off the bat. Um, coming up next year would be the first year that this property has probably been taxed, I'd say in at least ten, fifteen years. Um, so it would have the reevaluation of the land, plus the new shell buildings that are on there. We anticipate closing, hopefully, definitely by the end of the year, hopefully within the next few months. Meaning as of January one, they would be on the hook for next year's property tax bill. So we'd be getting property taxes right away. Um, what they've calculated, um, in negotiations is the fair market value of the property. The shell buildings and the accompanying acre, acreage, that'd be fourteen point five acres. It's five million, nine hundred ninety-three dollars and, and five, five million, nine hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, and then the additional acreage, seventeen point three, three-three acres, um, that's approximately one point seven million dollars. So we have that value at a hundred thousand dollars an acre. And that's, that's based off the new reeval. Um, that's what the property's been marketed, marketed at. So the economic incentive that So the economic incentive that we are providing the company is one point five million dollars in the reduction of the shell buildings, and that includes that three point five acres. And then we're selling the seventeen point three-three acres at forty thousand dollars an acre. So it's a sixty thousand dollar an acre um, reduction in the sale price, which ends up being two, two million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, um, eight hundred dollars. Um, so that's the total economic incentive, um, which brings the sale, the shell, the sale price for the shell buildings is five million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Now, we'll say that's subject to change a little bit because we're getting the property surveyed right now. We've got to cut out that Ivy Way right away and then our, that triangle. Um, so that's an approximation, but once that survey is done, we'll have a final sales price. But those are the basic terms right now.
Let me ask one question. Is this, what we got on the screen, is this part of the legal whatever, or proposal?
It is. It's what's in your economic incentive agreement.
Well, the reason I'm asking, it might not matter, just as one extra zero.
Yeah, I just saw that. That, that was on the.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't, they don't end up being twenty-five.
Um, and the one thing that I, I will say about the two point five million dollar incentive, so you've scheduled a public hearing for your, um, meeting in July, um, which would amend the interlocal agreement you have with the city of Goldsboro. Um, the city of Goldsboro approved that amendment last night. Um, we would have gotten it on this agenda, but I, they moved a little bit faster on their side and timing just wasn't right. But what that amendment would do is if you call in that interlocal agreement, we split the property taxes, um, out there and they agree not to annex. What they've agreed to do is forego their split only on this parcel up until the point that we recoup this incentive on the sales price.
The entire two point five mil.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's where I was off.
And it's still not annexed, it's just, we're.
Correct. They would still agree not to annex. They would provide water and sewer without requiring annexation. And then we would recoup all this money, um, before they start getting their split only on this parcel.
Right.
So that would make the county whole. And then, um, the incentive, I mean, that, this is in the public notice, also in your.
Back, back up just a minute. You said only on this part, you're talking about both shell buildings?
Correct. On the shell building parcel. So what would be this parcel right here?
Right. So both, yeah, okay.
Right. So if that interlocal agreement applies to some of the other parcels and parkeys, that it doesn't, wouldn't change.
And while you got that picture up there, the triangular piece that you're talking about is being surveyed off is behind, this section right there, behind.
Behind US cargo.
Yes, okay. Okay. So all of the rest of that is going to be transferred over to?
Correct. Everything outside of this right away, over to the east. So I think thirty-one point eight-three acres is probably accurate. I think total, this parcel is right at about thirty-four acres. It's probably about three acres, maybe a little bit less, once you factor in that, um, Ivy Drive right away. Cause I don't think that that was in the most recent tax card, so.
Sure. Thank you.
It's, has the Ivy, Ivy Lane Road been completed?
Yeah.
It's completed. It has not been turned over to DOT quite yet. We're working on the last little details of that.
No end to that one.
Um, but the company's job commitment is twenty, um, two hundred sixteen jobs by the end of twenty thirty-one. And while that is only five years out, this agreement is a ten-year agreement, so they would still have five more years if they didn't catch up right away. Um, and then, as we discussed earlier, the capital improvement commitment, about eighty-two point six million dollars. So that's an overview of the agreement. I'm going to refer to Mark if you have questions about the company itself.
I'm good. When are they closing?
As soon as they can.
As soon as that surveyor can get this description, um, done. I, you know, surveyors are obviously very busy right now, but they want to get in there as quickly as possible, so, um, I think I met two weeks ago, maybe, with the surveyor and told him, get going as quickly as you can.
So he knows the urgency?
He does.
I just want, you know, Andrew did a great job on this, uh, agreement and work. And it's, uh, not our typical performance agreement. But the way it was structured to get the company here, these were some things we had to be kind of creative with. So, so Andrew did, did a great job working with their attorney and their consultant. But, you know, um, this is a, a good company. I just want to read some of the stuff from the, the announcement because Joe always wants to hear about the, um, the state participation. So I did want to read a little bit about that. But, you know, Wayne County's had a great month of May. We had two of the largest economic development announcements that have been made in Wayne County, and they were, uh, large. We had the governor here for the first one and this one. Uh, hopefully we'll have the governor back to do some groundbreaking here shortly with these folks. But this is a great company, Turkish company, but I, I just want to read some of the, the press release. So there were some, uh, kind of staggering numbers in there. So, uh, Josh, uh, Governor Josh Stein announced to Pelson Tech Steel AS, a global leader in breathable film technologies for the hygiene and medical sectors. Would establish its first production facility in the United States in Wayne County, creating two hundred sixteen jobs. And the company will make a eighty-two point six million dollar investment in Goldsboro. North Carolina is pleased to welcome Pelson as it opens its first facility in the United States. Uh, our skilled workforce combined with North Carolina's convenient east coast location enables companies to efficiently produce and deliver high-quality products to their companies. Um, Pelson was established in two thousand and six as a subsidiary to the Hason Group, which has more than eighty years' experience in non-woven and polymer film technologies. Pelson was the first company in Turkey to manufacture breathable polyethylene films and today offers one of the industry's most advanced product, product portfolios. The company's project in Goldsboro established its first US facility for manufacturing various lines of breathable films for hygiene and medical applications. And enabling Pelson to, uh, respond more efficiently to rising demand across North America. Some quotes of, from the company and the Secretary of Commerce, uh, wages varying between the position, of course, the average salary for new jobs would be forty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. Our current average wage in Wayne County is forty-six thousand, two hundred and eleven. Uh, the company's project in North Carolina will be facilitated in part by a job development grant. Uh, the J D E G is approved by the state's economic investment committee earlier today on the twenty-seventh. Over the course of a twelve-year, year term of this grant, the project is estimated to grow the state's economy by more than seven hundred and nineteen point five million dollars. Using a form that takes into account the new tax revenues generated by the new jobs and the capital investment, the J D E G agreement authorized a potential reimbursement to the company of up to two million, sixty-five thousand dollars spread over twelve years. Um, they also have a, a, a community college grant, uh, and some other incentives that are in part of that with sales tax and, and those type things. Um, the project's, um, uh, return on investment of public dollars is a hundred and fifteen percent. Meaning for every dollar of potential cost, the state revenue receives two point, uh, fifteen, two dollars and fifteen cent in state revenue. The J D E G protect, projects result in positive next tax revenue to the state treasury, even after taking into consideration the grants reimbursement payments to the given company. Um, so a great company, our partners, you always got to list our partners, North Carolina General Assembly, North Carolina Community College, Wayne Community College, North Carolina Global Transport Economic Development Region, Wayne County, the city of Goldsboro, the Wayne County Development Lines, and North Carolina Southeast, Duke Energy, and the North Carolina Railroad. So a great project, um, for our, um, community. Two hundred sixteen, uh, much-needed jobs in our community. So, um, thanks to everyone being there. It was a great day. We had a, um, uh, a good announcement, uh, on the twenty-seventh, um, sixteenth of July, we hope to have, um, a groundbreaking at the site. The company will actually take the thirty thousand square foot and they're already, uh, entering to a, uh, contract to start renovating that building. It will be used for warehousing, uh, and they will, um, start immediately on that. The, the other, the fifty thousand will be part of their manufacturing process. Uh, if everything comes together, that, that building could be expanded to another two hundred thousand square feet. So that's why they needed additional land was to be able to expand both of those buildings. So, uh, they're working on that now. Uh, they've got a, a contractor in place that is working through the due diligence and the things like that that are needed. So, um, I, I, just a great testament to what we do at the Economic Development Region, but what we do locally with our commissioners and, uh, the W C D A. Really, uh, these two shell buildings, if we did not have these in place, we wouldn't have this company, Plant Center. Uh, we've talked a lot about product, and you folks have heard me preach on product. Uh, product's the key to game, and it's still that key to game. We're still getting a lot of foreign direct investment. We're looking at, had a call this morning at nine o'clock. Company's looking at reshoring, uh, their, uh, products to the United States. So, but we got to have product, put them in. Sometimes we do not have that timeframe to, to start new on, on the greenfield site. So, uh, I know we've been in some discussions, W C D A and, and myself, about the mobile product in Parkees. We do have one parcel left out there that, um, that is under county control. So we need to put up a fifty thousand, uh, square foot shell building as soon as we can because we've got people asking us. We got two projects now that asking us for fifty thousand that came to us after we put this under contract.
What kind of timeframe would it take to put it up? What kind of timeframe would it take to get it from ground to road?
I think we're in parcel seven and talking with some of our, our folks, contractors. I don't think we got the undercut, so we're hoping we could get it up in nine months or less. We got, we got the perfect, you know, we got the perfect building. It has been, uh, you know, we've sold three of those. It's the perfect, uh, building to use, and so we will move forward with that same type building.
And it would be, it would be expanded too, correct?
Yes, yeah. You got a building to be expanded. So that one will be expandable also, but we're ready to pull the trigger, so we need commissioner's support and in moving forward with building another building and getting W C D A on board and stuff like that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out some things here because this, this announcement came about because of a very aggressive incentive package that Wayne County put forth here. This was the first time that we as a county has upfronted those incentives. Wayne County had an incentive package of two point five three nine million dollars, two point five million dollars. The state of North Carolina, I'm going through all those words you just gave. I'm paraphrasing it. The state of North Carolina gave two, a little over two million dollars, two million, sixty-five thousand over twelve years. We gave our incentives upfront, but as a result of giving those incentives upfront, we got that project here.
And, and so the, the total package from the state, just so we'd be fair, uh, is, is low over four million dollars. When you look at the community college.
You're talking, talking to me, two million?
Well, I told you the J D E G. So when you look at the state incentives and sales tax, that is over four million.
The point I'm trying to make is that Wayne County is open for business, and we are very aggressively seeking new employers here in our county. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
The only other thing that, that I will add about the agreement, it is a three-party agreement. The city, uh, approved it last night. They are signing on. It reaffirms their commitment in the interlocal, um, MOU about not annexing and providing utilities, and also they're waiving, um, system development fees for the company as well. So that's included in there.
Thank you.
Tell them thank you.
This, this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans will sign up and speak, Ms. Karen.
I do have, um, the public hearing, Tom Delaia Clark.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have a request. This will be brief. Uh, but before I make this request, it was brought before the commissioners before. Uh, and in October two thousand twenty-one.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, this is for this public hearing.
Yes.
Oh.
I was about to, yes, I was about to. I didn't know if you were going somewhere with it from October to here. But yes, you can, you can only speak on.
This is a request.
Yes, you can only speak on this, ma'am.
I can only speak on this. Okay, so it's not.
Public comments is meaning just the public hearing?
Your public comment.
Yes, ma'am. It'll be the next one. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It's okay.
So I, I can't make this request?
Not today.
Okay. I'll send you a lift.
Yes, ma'am.
Send you all a lift.
Well, you come back our next meeting. I think we'll have public comment on the fifteenth of July. Yes. All right. Thank you.
And the James Parker?
Yeah. James Parker. James Parker's about here.
Okay, so no one else. You can now close.
Like to close, um, public hearing. Have any comments, motions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the economic incentive agreement, uh, to Pelson Tech Steel as stated in the motion.
Commissioner Williams, did yours pop up?
It didn't pop up.
Thank you all.
And that, Vice Chair, I also would like to echo what, um, Commissioner Daugherty said. Our economic development team is, is, uh, is number one. And it's, uh, it's proven, uh, that we've got some of the best in the business. Uh, uh, that, that was, uh, that was pretty much, um, seen this past weekend, or this la, last part of last week, uh, in Wilmington, that we've got, uh, some of the best of the best. Uh, so we will say thank you. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything further on that? We'll go to the county managers' comments. I would like to add that, um, I had the opportunity of going down with Mark to the Economic Development Association, uh, Summer Conference. And speaking in a group setting, uh, in front of about three hundred other economic developers. It's got quite a large room. We got the ability to promote our Parkees and promote our Ivy Property Site, talk about the N C site, site selection, uh, award, and what it means to us, and always out there promoting our economic agenda. And we take every advantage that we can, and I urge you to do the same when possible, uh, because that's what sells us. And, um, and, uh, we got a lot of attention there, I think, at that event, and, uh, so kudos to Mark and, and the team there. And enjoyed that. It was, uh, interesting to me. Also, a twenty-five year award. Seems like yesterday that Mr. Will Sullivan was giving me my one-year pen. He said, you got twenty-nine years' worth. But it flies by when you're having fun. So I've enjoyed it. And, uh, and enjoy to keep going. And, uh, but it, time does fly by. And I know what you're thinking. How can it be twenty-five years and you're that young? I enjoyed. Thank you. Never worth the comments.
Board of Commissioners reports. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
I'm not certain, but I'm, I'm hoping that we do have a Juneteenth celebration. Um, I know I had saw some news, June twenty-first, uh, that it would be downtown. I'm hoping that is the case. I'm not certain, but, um, if we don't have the festival, just to, you know, remember Juneteenth and how important this, this is, um, for us. So, thank you so much.
Commissioner Daughtry.
I, um, am excited about the announcements that we had last, uh, month. Uh, it means Wayne County is, uh, finally being recognized as a place to come locate your business. Um, to actually have both companies actually are international companies. If you really stop and think about one from based in out of Mexico and the other one out of Turkey, they, that, uh, that seems to be very important for our, our community. That said, we immediately need to go to work in regards to planning our next, uh, product. Uh, we, we've got to replace those shell buildings. I, I think this was the ver, in fact, this was the first time Wayne County actually had not one, but two shell buildings. And at the time, I remember getting a lot of pushback on that. Joe, why in the world would you want to have two shell buildings? Uh, we, we at one time, uh, remember back when we had a shell building in Mount Olive, that we almost had to replace the roof on it and still had not sold. Uh, but people can see that Wayne County, uh, investing in thi, this product actually brings those companies a, attention here to our county. So it is important that we immediately go to work to replace those shell buildings. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, you come?
Yes, sir. I, I really don't have a whole lot to report on, other than, uh, we've got several county employees that is going through, uh, some pretty tough times right now with health issues. And I understand we've got one that lost a parent. And, uh, you know, our, our employees is what, is, is what makes Wayne County run. It's, it's really not us, just the, it's the employees. And that's those that are having difficult times with health issues and lost a family member, let's keep them in mind.
Thank you, sir.
Something I have.
Commissioner, you're.
Thanks, sir. Uh, I want to, uh, say again, uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. Walter. Thanks, sir. I want to say again, thank you to Mr. Walter for attending the Economic Development Conference. That's his real name. He, I heard nothing but great comments, and he done a great job. I didn't really know that he could, this is comments, didn't know he could speak like that. He's always kind of quiet, don't get out in front. It was a big room, a lot of people, and he just, you know, had the crowd mesmerized. So.
Yeah.
We, we want to thank, but it's good that, you know, we, when, a man's got as much knowledge as, as Chip does in his, in his tenure here at the county and his roles he has, makes it easy for him to, to promote, to promote that. There again echoing on Commissioner Daughery's comments. You know, we, we've got some good, we're part of some good organizations with the W C D A, E D R. It's a proven fact that when you, when you have product, people look. We do need to, to move forward with our, our next, our next shell building, along with the, the looking for our next industrial park, because we're getting close to, we're one, one company away from, from being out of space, depending on, you know, what size that company is. So, a lot of good things going. Proud to be a part of, of the commission board that's, that's making things happen. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start out by thanking Mr. Kendall Lee for his invitation to us as Commissioners to go down to the Dudley Fire Department and see that. Very grateful donation from George Pacific to that department for equipment that they need. Really appreciate that. And thank you to George Pacific for supporting our fire service in the county, not just for them, but it also affects our citizens. Nobody's mentioned the Fourth of July and Juneteenth as well. It's a great time to enjoy your family and your friends as, and celebrate our freedom. Please be safe and remember those individuals who have just sacrificed for the opportunities that we have today, because I still believe we are very blessed to live in the greatest country on God's green earth, and we don't need to take that privilege and blessing lightly. We have a wages board meeting tomorrow, so I'll be attending that, representing us there, looking for some good things there. And again, I hope everyone has a very safe and happy Fourth of July and Juneteenth celebration as well.
Are you counting down today, Asia? Are you gonna be like a marking on the calendar?
Only about five, but I'm not counting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. No comment for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make one more comment. We are, you know, we're a, we're a military community, and there's some, there's just a lot of bad things going on in, all over the world now. And we've, we've got many women in harm's way, and it's very possible we're gonna have a whole lot more in harm's way. And, and I just pray that we, that they stay safe and that, that they're looked after. But, you know, we're, we're living, we're living in troubled times, and those young men and women are, are our defense. You know, we're a military family with Seymour Johnson. But this is for all branches of the service because we're, we don't know what's gonna happen right now and just, but, but we're gonna have, we're gonna have young men and women in harm's way. So, I just pray that, you know, they're, they're all okay. Thank you.
We have any discussion?
We do. We need to go back in for the same reasons that's before.
We want to go back and close sessions.
Yes, sir.
Can I extend the invitation?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Should've mentioned last month.
You too, Wayne.
No, I think this conversation has been very...
We're back, Wayne.
Okay, I'll...
So they can't read this meeting till June?